Good morning, everybody. Will you please stand with me? I'll ask Pastor Lake to start us off in prayer.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this Hampshire County, West Virginia. And we thank you, Lord, so much for letting us have the opportunity to be Americans. And we do pray for the coming snow that's coming to keep our community safe, Lord, on the roads and to and fro. Pray to work for this meeting and give a grant of wisdom and help us to know exactly what we're to do as citizens of this great country. We love you, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Can you please join me in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
Welcome, everyone, to the Hampshire County Commission Meeting Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. Glad to see everyone here this morning. We will start off, I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start off with the minutes. Both commissioners have access to digital copies of those ahead of time, so I would entertain a motion to either approve those minutes or take any comments or corrections at this time.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, I got a motion. Motion in a second on the floor to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to the presidents and commissioners' reports. We do have a lengthy agenda today. Most of the things I have to report on are in the agenda, but I will just touch some highlights. I did meet a couple times with HCSA in regards to their subcommittee for the budget, for their budget, and I feel that's been very successful, and they will report to us later here on the agenda. I interacted with the Health Department in their grant for the mobile unit building. It's been an ongoing project for close to two years now, from the start of the grant time, that is. They have run into some problems with the site there. Attended a meeting with all parties involved there. The site is evidently on some fill, and some adjustments are going to have to be made. The details of that haven't panned out yet, but I did actively participate there. And as the commission, that grant is to the Health Department of the commission is involved there because of the property, so we'll keep up to date on that. Obviously, have taken some several calls about the upcoming commissioner vacancy, and again, that's down there on the agenda, so I'm going to wait there. And we will get some information out to the public on that here later in the meeting, and also hopefully come up with a process as to move forward on that selection. Let me just look here at my notes to see if I missed anything else. And I think that'll do it. Like I said, a lot of it's going to be covered in the agenda, so I will pass the floor on to Commissioner Cannon at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you stated, most of my correspondence, correspondencees and items that I attended to since our last meeting are on the agenda. Outside of that, I did meet with the president of the Planning Commission and did speak with several of the planning commissioners just on some personnel issues. Did also talk to Tammy the Wilkins about our Health Department issue, which I hope we can find a way to resolve. As we get further details on that, we can report further, but I'll just say that this is yet again another instance in which this commission has caught and plans to hold accountable those contractors, engineers, architects, and attorneys who believe that, you know, they can make mistakes and they won't be caught, but we have caught it, and we're going to hold them accountable. And everybody makes mistakes, but these mistakes are to the tune of thousands of dollars. And I think that's one of the key things that this commission has tried to show the public is that's one of our biggest items, as taxpayer money is wasted on projects. We work very hard as boards, commissions, and commissioners to get projects to fruition. We hand it off to these individuals, and there's years and years of red tape. It takes forever to do things. They milk the project for as much money as they can. They belabor the processes, and this is just yet another instance of that occurring. And a big mistake was made, and we're going to do everything we can to hold them accountable and give the taxpayers their money's worth for the building they paid for. Also met with Senator Thorne. We had a sort of a partner meeting with the Morgan County Commissioners just to talk about the issues that have arisen in their county and just ongoing issues. Seems that when we do these commissioner summits and we go to these other commissions in other counties, it's very obvious that all of our counties have very similar issues, EMS, the potential of paid fire in the future. I could go on and on, but anyways, it was really good and refreshing to kind of meet with them and see if there's some tricks that they're using. I did find out they had some very useful information on how they run their criminal justice board over there. We have probably one of the most efficient and well-run day report criminal justice boards in the state, in my opinion, and they seem to be practicing a lot of the same practices. So I've got our director in touch with their director, and we're seeing if we can work together to help lower jail bills while keeping violent offenders in jail and nonviolent people out on their own dime and on the taxpayers' dime. I won't go on and on, but this is my last meeting, and I wanted to thank everybody for the prayers and faith you've placed in me, and it really has been a true honor to be a part of, you know, the oldest commission in the state of West Virginia. I just hope that this trend of gentlemen and, you know, transparent business, I could go on and on, but I really think we're in a good place. We've had some serious ups and downs, but I'm really proud, although we may have disagreed vehemently against one another. It always led to us respecting each other a little more, and I've always known where the commissioners' hearts are at. But, you know, we've had budget surpluses nearly every year. You know, I leave with nearly $2 million surplus. We've made major advancements in tourism. We've really worked with our sheriff and our schools to work on our SRO program to keep our kids safe. There's just, I could go on and on and on. I thought about all the things that I would talk about, and I know we have a long meeting, but I'm just really proud to have been a part of this commission. You know, and I've really worked as a single commissioner to root out the sandbox mentality. You know, when I came in, we had certain boards and commissions with individuals that, you know, were maybe there for their own gain, and I think I've worked towards showing the public how, when these government entities and boards work together, how we can achieve almost anything. And I'm going to leave it there. I'm not going to go on and on, but I really appreciate the opportunity, and thank you, commissioners.
Okay, before I pass the floor to Commissioner Mance, I just wanted to, again, a couple weeks ago, I thanked Commissioner Cannon for his service and congratulated him on his move to the delegate position to represent us in that manner, but I do appreciate him staying on here till the last minute as well. I know he's informally started his new job, but he'll formally start that in the morning, I believe, so I do appreciate him literally staying right here till the last minute, so thank you for that, Commissioner. Mr. Mance, do you have a report today?
Gentlemen, I'll save the report for everything that we'll talk to about during the, it'll be covered during the agenda. Would like to say, you know, thank you and congratulations again to Commissioner Cannon as he moves forward, although, you know, he and I have also disagreed at points. I think that it's a difficult position to be in public service. You're under constant scrutiny. Thank you for your service, and I do honestly expect that you'll do great things for the community down in Charleston, so look forward to seeing what all you can bring back to the county in your new capacity. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, since we do have a lengthy agenda here this morning, I believe we do might have a cancellation in there, but so that'll shorten it up some, but we'll keep moving right along. We're a couple minutes ahead right now, but I'll go ahead and call for Mr. Hart from Hampshire County Development Authority and our Mr. Carroll from Parks and Rec. I believe you guys are in a joint effort here. Would you prefer to go one at a time or together?
Well, actually, I'm going to invite Nick up in just a second.
Okay.
We have two items on the agenda today for you.
Okay, yes, I should have.
And so Nick's going to come up here in just a second and join me, but before we start with that, we wanted to approach the commission with an issue that goes back to 2023, when Eileen Johnson was the director and Rebecca was the vice president of marketing, and the county commission approved some grant funding for us that we need to make some adjustments to. And I'm going to, if it pleases the commission, I would like to defer to Rebecca Hart to speak on the matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Before I get, jump right into that, I would like to give an update of what has been going on with the Development Authority. I found out this past week that the board office has, will, should have completed their move from the annex building at the old Romney Elementary School to the Augusta Elementary School. I guess it will depend on the weather, but they were hoping to get everything out of there this week. As you know, we have worked with the Sheriff's Department and the day court here in the county, and once all the properties are exchanged, where we take possession of that property, we are going to turn that over to those two entities to be able to use that building for the growth of their programs. Secondly, JT has been working diligently on some repairs and mostly painting and cleaning at the old Cape Bridge Community Complex, which we're going to talk about here in a few minutes, and I am proud to say that he has got us completely 100% occupied with the tenant space in that building.
Glad to hear that. And I'm very, like I said, just happy that you all have been very successful there with that.
Thank you. As JT alluded to, back in January 2023, myself and Eileen Johnson, who was then the director of the Development Authority, approached the Hampshire County Commission requesting $10,000 funds for two USDA grants that we were applying for. The first one was for a feasibility study for bringing in a licensed daycare or childcare program and advanced learning into the county. And the second one was for another study to bring in a rail spur into the county. At that time, it was January, the USDA grants are due in February, at the end of February, so it was decided that we, our department, the Development Authority, would take on the rail spur, and the then grant writer for the county would take on the one for the child daycare project. Unfortunately, the one for the childcare was never completed. However, the rail spur got on a fast track with the USDA, and it caught the attention of the West Virginia Department of Transportation, and specifically Cindy Butler, who is the multi-modal director for the state of West Virginia under that, the Transportation Office. She proposed, and we accepted, that they take over the, or would produce a design for us for that rail spur, and we jumped right on that. It was a huge opportunity for the county, and they did hire RK&amp;K out of Kaiser. That has been ongoing, and we have seen some preliminary plans for some, or designs for the rail spur into the Romney Business Park. We have sent it back with some recommendations from Robert France and from the Tom McEagle in hopes that we can help support his business in the future, if that can work out. The reason I'm here today is because we did not, did not need the matching funds for the USDA grant. We were asking instead if we could, if you would allow us to re-assignate them towards a grant that we are currently writing with our current grant writer here in the county for a $50,000 grant to be applied towards some use at the new Cape Bridge Community Complex. We have needs there, as you can imagine, with an old building. As you know, you all fixed the roof for us. We've done some painting and updating, things like that, but we are planning to use this grant specifically to work on doors inside and outside of the building, some windows and lighting. We hope to be able to do further repairs to the building, and we'll talk to you about that later. And I guess that's it in a nutshell. Basically, what we're asking again is if we can reapply the monies that you approved in 2023, the $10,000 for the rail spur, to be redirected to the project we have ongoing and towards the grant, to strengthen that grant for the USDA to make those repairs and changes at the complex in Cape Bridge.
What does the grant match ask?
There is no longer a match. What it does, however, is strengthen our grant, shows community, support community, you know, a little, and a skin in the game, so to speak.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
Gentlemen, Commissioner Mance, just to reiterate what our chairwoman said, this was grant money that we had already approved for the Development Authority to advance the rail spur investigation and to try to bring that idea to fruition of a plan, if you will. And because of strict deadlines and a lot of other variables, it fell through. So this is money that we had already allocated and allowed for in our budgeting. So I mean, personally, anything to help, shouldn't say anything, but just about anything to help that Cape Bridge Community Complex, I'd like to go along with within reason. You mentioned lights and doors, is that the main item?
It was doors. Yeah, and they will be sharing this with you. Phase one, is that what you're showing me?
Well, yeah. I believe this would be phase two, wouldn't it?
What she's talking about, yeah.
Yeah, you can interject.
I'm sorry, I'm going to talk about this in just a second when Nick comes up here, but actually, for the grant that we're applying for with the USDA, it would be, it would be for windows, doors, signs, lighting, painting, and ceiling tiles. The hope, so yes, I'm sorry, for the grant, she is correct. So it would be a part, the phase two part of the project.
And the total cost of the grant is, or not the total cost of the project would be $60,000. And if I can interject a little girl math, if you'll forgive me for that, the savings that the county had for the design that was taken over by the Department of Transportation saved us $85,000 in that design work. So I know you're all gentlemen, but in girl math, that means we are having a much, it's a much smaller amount of money that is needed for this project as far as what the county will input.
Yeah, I think the.
I think I have a couple questions. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, Commissioner Cannon already touched on it, but I would believe a transfer of that $10,000 previously committed here would, this would be a good, it would be wise for us to transfer that to the Cape and Bridge facility improvements. Go ahead, Commissioner Mance.
I think I do just have a couple questions, really mechanics more so than, you know, nature of the rest, I think I understand the project. Where were the original funds allocated from? On the agenda, we have change of purpose for funding HCSDA and Parks and Rec request for ARP. So just to be clear, we're not talking about any previous ARP allocation being re-characterized right now, right?
That is correct. That's going to be part two of our presentation, Logan.
Okay. Okay, so then for this part, and this is actually a question back for the commission, when we say the funds were previously allocated and accounted for in the budget, do we have a mechanism for carryover from 2023 into 2025's budget so that it's actually captured right now?
It just reverses to the general fund if it's not spent.
Okay, the clerk has explained, Commissioner, if you could hear, that it reverts to the general fund when it's not spent. And if I remember correctly, our original allocation was general fund for this when they approached us in 2023.
All right, so then I think the only thing that I'm just trying to make sure that we're talking about here is that I don't think it's actually captured in the current budget as a forecast, so that this would be a new request against the general fund. I don't have any particular objections to that, other than I think during the email we got guidance from Clerk Stright with regards to, you know, maybe some concerns over projections for revenues. I'd actually like to ask Clerk Stright to kind of speak on that, just I think as it's relevant right now, if we're talking about a new draw against, or a new request against the general fund as to the state of the general fund, it's only about timing. I have no objections to this allocation, but if, you know, the clerk has any concerns with regards to, you know, revenues, then I'd like them to be addressed.
No, that is not an issue. The only purpose that I spoke to the matter of waiting to see what the revenues would be is in regard to our future budget that we're talking about with the funding requests from the festival committees. That would be in the '26 budget, so we'll be setting that in March, and we'll get our revenue forecast from the assessor in early March, like March 3rd, I think it is. So this would just be, you know, just an allocation, discretionary allocation essentially from the general fund, which is adequate to handle this.
Sounds good. No further questions? Thank you, by the way.
No problem.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you for the discussion. Do we wish to move on this today?
I'll move, gentlemen, that we authorize the $10,000 grant match out of the general fund.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the $10,000 originally allocated for 2023, be moved to the new project at the Cape and Bridge Building. Again, $10,000, I believe I already said that, but all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Welcome, Nick.
Good morning.
All right, gentlemen, do you have copies of the proposals that we sent out yesterday? Okay.
Yes, I got those emails.
Okay.
On Todd.
All right.
I did email Commissioner Mance as well.
And Commissioner Mance, do you have a copy from the Development Authority? Perfect, okay. Nick and I talked, I'm going to go first, and the first thing that I want to say is I want to thank the county commission for the monies that you guys have put into the building itself. We've got a new roof, we've got new heating and air, and when the Development Authority took over the building January 1st, we tried to identify the things, at least in our part of the building, that we felt were critical needs, and so we began putting together a plan. I sat down with Rolf, and in fact, just last week, we talked about, we were working on a USDA grant, which would be phase two, which Rebecca just alluded to, but suffice it to say, and you gentlemen are better, are more familiar with this than I am, but anyway, I understand that we had some ARP money left over through what they call the LATCF fund. To my understanding, that's where the $75,000 came from that we're proposing today. Nick and I talked, we felt that it would be reasonable for us to share in that cost since we are sharing that building. You know, as we have the classrooms that we are working through with tenants, he has the cafeteria and the gymnasium and the outside. And as Rebecca also reported, I'm tickled to say that we have three new tenants coming into the building. We have a women's wellness center, which I'm very excited about. The bakery is going into the kitchen, we had an electrician in there over the weekend. Janice Fetschiet is opening that, and then we rented the last space to a woman who is actually part of our Hampshire on the Horizon class, who's a furniture restorer. So I'm happy to report that we are at full occupancy. In phase one, the report that you have in front of you, we identified plumbing and electrical as our critical needs. We need a bathroom on the upstairs floor. My good friend Matthew Hart, who's in the audience, met with me last week, we went through the facility, put together some preliminary numbers, and in our phase one project, we put together, our approximate cost is going to be around $40,000. Phase two, which is part of our grant effort, which is due at the end of this month, is around 60. So we have a plan to identify the key items to get the Cape and Bridge Complex to where we would like to see it. So that's the plan that we have put together. We feel it's very appropriate for what is needed there for at least our side of the building. So at this point, I feel like if there's questions that you have for me, I'm happy to answer them, but I thought I'd turn it over to Nick, let him talk about his side of the building.
Well, first off, I want to point out how working with Development Authority has really created a win-win situation for both Parks and Rec and the county overall. No longer do we just have empty spaces and storage areas that aren't being used, but we're taking a building that's owned by the county and optimizing it. So while Development Authority has secured tenants for every room, on our side of it, the recreation side, Old Cape and Bridge had the highest usage rate of any facility during my tenure as director. So we had 26 different people rent the facility in January. Allowing Development Authority to take care of what they do good allows me to do what I do good, and that's the recreation side. So today, we're here to request the ARP funds to hopefully complete phase one of the project. As you know, the roof on the Development Authority side did get complete. The roof on our side of the building is, still has a few leaks in it. With the approval of these funds, we could begin phase one of that project, and I think it's important to understand that if we repair the damaged roof, then we can save the infrastructure. then we can save the infrastructure from further cost and further damage. So, it is, it is a pressing need. Also, we want to install heating and air conditioning units in the kitchen, heating and air conditioning units in the classroom. We plan on painting the locker rooms, getting new doors on the outside, and also upgrading our security cameras so we can have remote viewing. I will point out that on our side of things at Parks and Rec, we did kick off our fundraising campaign this weekend with a cornhole tournament. It raised $2,200, which is a good way to get the community involved, get them out using the facility. As you can see by the project proposal, this is a five-year project proposal with budgeting about $210,000. But if we can land $40,000, combine what we did with fundraiser with the ARP funds, then we can begin Phase One of the project.
And for the public, this LATCF is Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. It's a United States Treasury allocation to the, to certain qualifying local governments. And it's to stimulate the general fund. So, these monies can be used for anything the general fund can be used for. Mr. President, I don't mean to jump in front of you, I was just clarifying, but...
No, I appreciate that. That's, that was the next, next sentence that was gonna come out of my mouth was to explain exactly what the funds are. And I just want to say, you know, I appreciate you gentlemen working together, especially on this project down there in Cape and Bridge. I know we as a commission and the Parks and Rec and the Development Authority have tossed this around and worked through the details of it for some time. You know, there, back in the fall, there was some rhetoric that we weren't paying attention to that building down there and that, that we weren't, it wasn't a priority. However, I think the community has seen that it has been a priority. And, you know, back in the fall, it didn't make the paper, but I did list the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been spent down there. And it was an old building, so it takes, takes that before you start to notice. But we're getting to the point where we're gonna notice now. So, you know, I really appreciate your guys' effort and two county entities working hand in hand to make this happen. And again, we, we hadn't ignored that building. A lot of effort's been put into it, even when we had the few naysayers there a couple of months ago. So, I just, you know, it's, takes the effort of gentlemen like you to, to bring this to, to the front. And, you know, with that, I'm, I'm in support of their request, gentlemen.
The only other thing I'd like to say is we're, we've historically been a very conservative commission, but I've known about this fund for, let's just say, a long time. And there's, there's a fine line between being conservative and making good decisions to put money to work that's gonna pay a dividend. And I think this is a great use of this money. So, and I also wanted to touch on, you know, we've talked about, when I first came into office, that a lot of these different boards, it was, this is our sandbox and that's their sandbox, and this is just another example. And not only you working with the commissioners, but that was a school board building that would have cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars to deal with that they didn't have. So, thank you, guys. And I'll yield the floor to Commissioner Mans.
I appreciate it. Yeah, mainly just questions kind of about mechanics again. Is, and I do apologize because I know you just covered it, Commissioner Cannon. Can you give just a brief summary of the amount that we have in this account? And then the nature of, you know, where it comes from? Because it's all on the agenda that we had ARP listed. Just help me, help me become a little bit more familiar with the account and what we have. If it's discretionary, then it's discretionary, but I just don't understand this account yet.
Well, if I could interject here, we've kind of lumped that as a, this tribal fund that they came in, we kind of all got lumped into the ARP category.
Yeah.
It was funds that were distributed at that time. It was a separate event, came in $250,000 checks. And so, it's been waiting to be spent. It has accrued interest in the meantime, and Mr. Ronkin gave us a handout, which includes all the interest accrual that he's meticulously calculated and then confirmed with reports. But on committing this money, spending this money, will take the balance down to $424.02. So, this will pretty much put us through all of the COVID relief funds that came in one designation or another. But again, they all fell under that ARP heading, and that's kind of how we've handled them.
Yeah, that's exactly how I was gonna...
Sounds great, and I will accept, and I'll accept a thumbs up on this from anybody in the room. Can we verify that this is gonna meet any of the reporting requirements or criteria that are attached to these funds that's been reviewed?
Yes, that has been reviewed, and we're assured that there's, there's no commitment that, that just passes all the thumbs up tests. Now...
Sounds great, I'll, I'm cool. I would ask, gentlemen, just that, you know, as you're administering this project, squeeze as much as we can out of this, if these are discretionary funds. You know, just do everything you can with these funds. And then if you've got modifications that come out of, you guys saving a few pennies here and there, let's just bring it back and talk about it, but see how much we can actually get done. Because I can see that these are, you know, rough figures instead of quotes, which I'm cool with. But my request would just be that we actually shop it when we're doing implementation.
Well, I talked to Matthew earlier, and we actually, you know, again, you were correct. But we, because of the size of these numbers, we will be getting formal bids clearly for the plumbing. And even the painting really is only the supply part. We've, we've actually got folks volunteering to help us paint. I've been spending some time myself painting on the weekends. So, but good point, we will, we will certainly maximize the dollars.
And I just wanted to point out that the gymnasium floor, I actually do have a quote, so the $75,000 is quoted out, and Matt Hot is the one to do the roof replacement. So, which eats up roughly 140 of the $210,000 project that I had in place. So, these numbers are pretty firm.
Now, are you gentlemen gonna work together on the lump sum? Or should we separate 37.5 for Parks and Rec, 37.5 for Development Authority?
I think we should separate it.
I, we agree, we should separate it. We've agreed to split the bills the way we're operating now.
Okay.
That would be my recommend, I think that'd be our recommendation.
That's what, that's what we prefer.
You okay with that, gentlemen?
Yes, I'd say that would be the way to do it. And Parks and Rec, also at our last meeting, and I'm sure, I'm sure you guys know that the, we had a $10,000 grant. And I'll let the clerk speak on when that, when that reaches our account, or if it has or hasn't yet. But the governor, previous governor, gave out several grants there, and you all...
It is in the account we have.
Okay. I knew it was on its way, because I had read the letter last, last meeting.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, I'd move at this time that the County Commission earmark slash allocate $37,500 out of the LATCF fund to the Parks and Rec Commission, and that we also take the other $37,500 and allocate earmarked to the Economic Development Authority out of the LATCF fund, contingent upon competitive bidding for each construction project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and Commissioner Cannon did a good job with the details there. I won't repeat the motion unless the clerk needs me to. You got it? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Glenn Archer, Fourth Annual Cape and River Funding Request.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sirs.
Thank you.
Mr. Archer, your letter has been distributed and also forwarded to Commissioner Mans.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Glenn Archer. My wife Jenny and I live at 728 North Hooks Mill Road in Yellow Spring, West Virginia, on the Kikipun River. I'm here on behalf of the friends of the Kikipun River as president of the board to request your support at our Fourth Annual Kikipun River Fest, taking place on June 20 and 21st of this year. Over the past three years, River Fest, a free community festival, has grown into a beloved event that celebrates the beauty and importance of the Kikipun River while bringing families and outdoor enthusiasts and conservation-minded individuals together. Last year's festival was a great success, drawing over 1,200 attendees from Hampshire County and beyond. With your support, we can make the 2025 festival even better. We are requesting a $1,500 sponsorship from the County Commission to help us fund the festival's educational activities, entertainment, and outreach efforts. These funds will support engaging programs such as the live music performance featuring local artists, family-friendly river activities, including a fly fishing demonstration, a children's sailboat race, a rock skipping contest, and other kids' crafts, educational presentations on river conservation, wildlife, and water quality. Our festival is made possible through the support of our fantastic community partners, including our co-host of the event, The River House, also the Kikipun and Lost River Land Trust, the Kikipun Institute, Trout Unlimited, the West Virginia Rivers Coalition, and many others. These partnerships help us provide meaningful, hands-on experiences that inspire residents and visitors alike to appreciate and protect our waterways. We greatly appreciate your consideration, and I would like, and I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time and for your continued dedication to this community. And this is my first time appearing before you guys.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you gentlemen have any questions for Mr. Archer?
I don't, no, sir, I'm certainly in favor.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm good, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mans.
I wanted to say, yeah, just wanted to say thank you for your efforts and for bringing this forward. I think, you know, most of us are aware of the impact that these festivals can and do have on the local economy, the small businesses that participate in them. But that's pretty much all I wanted to say to you, sir, and to the organizations that you represent, before we start talking about the other aspects of the request, but thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Archer, what we normally do, we do receive a lot of requests this time of year. We schedule our budget workshop for the upcoming budget. We work with the clerk, and, and then we have all the county entities come in for our budget meetings that happens in the middle of March, which is just right at a month from now. Normally, what we do with these requests is, and I will say I'm favorable to this, but we do wait particularly these, these like festival-type requests. We keep these, these requests on hand, and as we look at the budget in March, again, we, as we count every dollar and what the upcoming year will look like, then we can make a solid decision on these. And that's what I would suggest to the other two, the other two Commissioners, is that we, that's, that's the way it's traditionally done, would not have to be done that way, but I just, I do think that's probably our most responsible movement going forward with these type of requests.
Mr. President, if I could interrupt a second there. This one is one that they'll need the funding before the end of this fiscal year. But if I'm not mistaken, we allocated that money currently in this budget, so it's, it's available to, to them. This would be something then we could allocate into next year's budget as well. But I believe the funding for this year's festival has probably already been allocated, I'm pretty sure. If not, there's plenty of funds were available to do that, $1,500.
Well, that, if that's already been allocated, then again, this would be for the following year. So, maybe no motion is, is needed at this time, because again, this would be for '26.
I kind of overlooked that in, in looking through the, the funding. And I checked with Ms. Bill Maher, and she agrees, we're probably, we're pretty sure we've already allocated.
Because I remember about this time last year, or maybe later than that. So, again, I think for continued support, I'm glad you're here. And I think, again, that's, my suggestion is to handle it, since the money you would currently need is already available, sir.
I appreciate that.
I don't have anything further, Mr. President, thank you for coming in.
So, to remove any ambiguity, I'm apologize.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was gonna say, just to remove any ambiguity, should we recertify our previous allocation out of this year's budget and then make the, the distribution?
Covered everything.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Do you gentlemen want to move to just recertify for clarification?
I would move to recertify the allocation of $1,500 from the general fund to the Cape and River Fest Festival for FY, I think it's '25, right?
Correct.
For this year?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we recertify the amount requested from Mr. Archer for, for the festival. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, very much.
So, in regard to the festival request, you got two other, on the agenda there, there's two more requests, and those are definitely allocations from the next year's fiscal year. You know, so as you described earlier, they're just something we can put in the file and be aware of during our budget sessions.
Okay, so do we have anybody here from Founder's Day funding request? Or do we have anybody present for Summer Harvest Fest funding?
When they contacted me asking to be on the agenda, I scheduled them, but I told them to send us letters, and that's why we're here.
I was just making sure I wasn't missing anybody. So, again, gentlemen, I think traditionally we've been favorable to those requests, but I would suggest that we hold those requests until we meet in mid-March for our budget workshops.
I concur.
So, by virtue of no motion, they'll just continue on the agenda? Or do you gentlemen want to table these items?
I would move to table that, those two requests.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we table the two requests, you know, pending our budget workshop, which is required in March. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay, clerk, I believe our... Okay, Clerk, I believe our 9/45 appointment called and canceled on account of possible bad weather?
No, actually, she was ill, but she has rescheduled for the February 25th meeting. She's planning on coming then.
Okay. So that does put us just a couple minutes ahead. I had one item there I didn't touch on in my original President's Report, and it would fall under correspondence and requests. I will just put the information out there now, I think, a future agenda for next actions. But anyway, a couple meetings back, as some of you are aware, the Cape and Bridge Rescue Squad, which had been inactive for several years now, approached us about buying out the lease, which they have with the county. That was a 99-year lease, and had an option for them to purchase that. Again, just as correspondence information here, the Cape and Bridge Rescue Squad did send us a letter that came in here last minute, and I'll just read that to the Hampshire County Commission. Again, from Cape and Bridge, I'm sorry, let me start from the top. Cape and Bridge Rescue Squad Incorporated to the Hampshire County Commission, date February 6, 2025. Dear Commissioners, we are sending this letter to inform you that we have had a change in discussion to the recent purchase of the building. We feel that it is in the best interest of the county and the community to cancel our current lease with the county completely and to allow the county to take complete ownership of the building to continue to provide EMS operations. Again, gentlemen, it's not on the agenda. I just wanted to bring that correspondence to the table, and I think certainly for our next agenda, we should list that as an item to move forward and discuss with them how we want to look at that lease and move forward with changing the current lease and allowing the county ownership of that building. I certainly know our county ambulance would like to be able to do that. So, again, not on the agenda, not something we will act on today, but I wanted to bring the correspondence to the table.
Just quickly to speak on that, Commissioner, I think I see Director Hammack in the audience?
Yes, sir, he's here.
Is he there?
He is.
All right. If he'll indulge us, might ask him about that momentarily and possibly even ask him to look into it for us in his new capacity, as if he doesn't have enough work right now.
Yeah, he's concurred that he'll work with us on that. And, again, I will certainly approach Chief Hammack about that. I just, again, I didn't want to act on it. We didn't have it on the agenda ahead of time, but I did want to bring that correspondence to the public. Clerk, do you have any quick, we got about six minutes, and we're about six minutes ahead.
We have a personnel letter from the assessor?
Commissioner Mance, did you have a copy of this correspondence?
I'm actually not sure that I do.
I'm not sure that you do either. Don't know me as I handed that out. I may not have copied that out to you.
I'll read this aloud.
Okay, I can catch up on it.
Obviously, from the assessor of the county to the Hampshire County Commissioners is asking to move Samantha Stadmuller from the 406 budget to the 407 budget. Then she wishes to hire Queyona Byer and Jessica Anderson to fill the two empty positions within her office. If approved, the hire date would be February 10th and February 24th, respectively, in the order they were listed. Both paid from the 406 budget with salaries of $31,200 or $15 an hour. There's no discussion or objections. I'd move that we authorize the assessor to hire Samantha Stadmuller, I'm sorry, Queyona Byer and Jessica Anderson, and move Samantha Stadmuller from the 406 budget to the 407 budget.
I do have discussion on this. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't see this on the agenda specifically.
If I could, these are positions in the department head's office, the department head making the hire, and also they are budgeted positions, so she's not spending any new funds or anything. It's already been approved in her budget for those positions, and the department heads have always worked on the, with the latitude, that they make their hires and then bring them to the commission for approval.
Just for ratification?
Correct.
All right. I have no issues whatsoever with the ratification. However, I'm gonna abstain from voting on this until we actually get it on the agenda. Just, there's, there's a good way forward. I think that's probably our best practice. I know this one probably just got dropped off on us recently. What I would say is that, given, I promise, so this has a point. I think that as we work through the appointment process that's gonna come after, following Commissioner Cannon's absence, we'll have probably another meeting here in the near future. This would be an easy one to slide back, especially if we're just talking about ratification. However, if you guys decide to move forward, I'm just gonna abstain.
My motion, Mr. President, was under the, again, right here on the agenda, correspondence and request.
Yeah, I'll second your motion, Commissioner Cannon. That's, as far as, you know, the assessor is an elected official. As far as the, our involvement in that is the budget. Her budget was approved. She's not changing her budget. So I feel confident in a second there. And so we have a motion in a second. I will ask Commissioner Mance to state his, since he is abstaining, to state his exact reason for abstain.
The reason that I have abstaining is because of West Virginia Augma opinion, Augma Committee opinion 2502, which specifically states that this is an invalid use or this does not meet the specificity requirements for public body agendas. It's gonna be brought up in future meetings. That's what I hope to set the standard for, you know, all county bodies going forward. However, if, you know, we're moving forward today, I'm just gonna abstain, as I believe it to be a violation of Augma and intentionally violating it is actually technically a misdemeanor, and I won't participate in that.
So it's a violation of an opinion. We should be clear. Augma is an opinion, not the law, but moving on.
That is correct, Commissioner Cannon. I would concur. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, right on schedule. And we have with us today Historic Landmarks Commission, request to replace resigning members and appoint Dan Oats and Eileen Johnson.
Thank you for having us, giving us some time to do this. We have an important commission, part of our county, that has a mission to preserve and find more of our historic landmarks and try and get them on the Historic Registry for West Virginia and/or on the National Historic Registry. And we are down two members. We had two retiring, and we would like to replace them with two excellent candidates. We have Eileen Johnson and Dan Oats. And you have their bios and their resumes, and I'm hoping that you will consider them as replacements for Elena McGuinn and Bob Hott, not Bob Hott, pardon me, Bob Smith.
I would definitely support the action today or a motion to appoint these members. I will definitely speak. I do know firsthand, working with Eileen, she's a very hard worker. She's very diligent. I could go on and on. I definitely think she'll put her heart in anything that she does. And Dan Oats is probably one of the best historians we have in the county. So I actually was joking with him a couple days ago. I was trying to get him on this commission for quite a while now, but he's trying to retire. So the county definitely appreciates you conceding, Mr. Oats, and helping us out. We are very, very, very happy to have you. He has a whole historical setup in his house for documents. He probably has one of the most impressive private archives of Hampshire County history I've ever seen. So there couldn't be a better set of two people to be appointed to this commission, in my opinion.
Yes, I'd agree. Two excellent choices there for a board, and that's important to boards, is having folks that are gonna be active and have a passion for the board at hand. So, yes, two good choices there, in my opinion.
I love it when we all have good reason to agree. I couldn't be happier with the appointments that you guys are bringing forward, and I really look forward to working with both of you guys more.
This time, Mr. President, I would move that we appoint Dan Oats and Eileen Johnson to the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the two Landmarks Commission board members, Mr. Dan Oats and Mrs. Eileen Johnson, be approved for that board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
We'll make you proud.
We've actually been able to stay ahead of schedule. Clerk, do you have any quick items there that we can address?
Well, as of last evening, I got a letter from the Planning Commission regarding the resignation of the director, the compliance officer, I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion, gentlemen? I would move that the County Commission accept the resignation of the County Compliance Official, Amanda Barnes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Commission accept the letter from the Planning Commission in relation to the resignation of Ms. Barnes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Mr. President, I don't have anything besides invoices.
Okay, we will go ahead then and move on to our cell tower permit AT&amp;T equipment upgrade on Ben's Knob Trail. And I think we have Mr. Delaplane here for that this morning. Good morning.
Due to circumstances, I'm just presenting this for the planning office.
I understand.
This is the President, sir.
Just for the public, this is a, did you want to explain, Mr. Delaplane? It's just a cell tower construction project for new generator and switch. Did I characterize that correctly?
Right, just upgrade, sure.
For AT&amp;T's tower.
Yeah.
On 1341 Ben's Knob Trail. As we've all normally been unanimously in favor of having better cell service, I'll move that the Commission accept the permit as presented by AT&amp;T Mobility.
Commissioner Mance, as you get a chance to look at this, I know it's a lot of paper, so I don't...
I, yeah, I did not, so I'm gonna abstain on this for just lack of ability to review.
Okay, I'll second the motion for the construction detail of a generator and switch to be added to the AT&amp;T Tower at 1341 Ben's Knob Trail. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Clerk, you have nothing other than invoices, right? We're all caught up?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Hott is here with us this morning for talk about roof replacement on the annex in the old jail building. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. I hope one day we run out of roofs.
We got a lot of roofs, a lot of roofs, and a lot of them are flat roofs.
We have two roofs. I know maintenance on the annex building above the Sheriff's Department has been patching leaks for the last couple years, small patches. They're getting worse, they're getting worse. So we had an estimate come in about a year ago. It was $33,000 to replace that flat roof. Updated estimate just about three weeks ago is $36,000 on the annex.
Yep, I think we should authorize Mr. Hott to place the project up bid.
Okay, at this time, I would move that we authorize Matthew Hott to send out requests for proposals on the two separate roof projects.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that we proceed with the details of requests for proposals for the two roof projects explained today. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioner Mans, Commissioner Eglinger, Mr. Cannon. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hott.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on down to our next agenda item, and that is a process for selection of Commissioner Cannon's replacement. Just let me start out with the, I have had a lot of questions about this process over the last month. So I just, I want to read the law. Some of the questions have been, you know, why do the commissioners do this? You know, why don't we vote? So I'm just going to start off the discussion, not really with discussion, but just some explanation for the public. Because like I said, I've gotten numerous questions, email, telephone, out at the store, whatever. So just for clarification, I'll start with some West Virginia code. And Article 3, Chapter 10, Section 7 addresses Part A, "Any vacancy in the office of County Commissioner or Clerk or County Commission that should be filled by appointment by the, shall be filled by appointment by the County Commission. The appointee must be a person of the same political party with which the person holding the office immediately preceding the vacancy was affiliated at the time of the vacancy occurred, provided that the time of the appointment, the appointee must have been a member of that political party for at least 60 days prior to the occurrence of the vacancy." Then it goes on, Part B. "If a quorum of the County Commission," which would be at least two, "fails to make an appointment within 30 days, the County Executive Committee of the same political party with which the person holding the office preceding the vacancy was affiliated at the time the vacancy occurred, shall submit a list of three legally qualified persons to fill the vacancy. Within 15 days from that date on which the list is received, the County Commission shall appoint a candidate from the list to fill the vacancy. If the County Commission fails to make the appointment within the specified time, then the County Commissioner with the longest tenure shall eliminate one name from the submitted list, followed by the County Commissioner with the second longest tenure, then eliminating one name from the submitted list. The name remaining after those two names have been eliminated shall be deemed to be appointed by the County Commission to fill the vacancy." And that pretty much covers what we're charged with the upcoming vacancy of Commissioner Cannon. In layman's terms, Commissioner Manson and myself need to come up with a plan to, in the next 30 days, to pick a commissioner. If we cannot pick one or agree on one, then it'll be turned over to the Republican, the local Republican Executive Committee, which would then pick three names. So that's what I've been telling folks, as there's been a lot of questions. I just wanted to put that out there. One thing the code doesn't address, but it's in another part of the code, and it doesn't address it here because it says legally, you know, legally able to serve in the, is that the magisterial districts, I believe Commissioner Manson's in A and I'm in F, any person appointed could not be in A or F, in addition to being a Republican. So I just wanted to start off with that, you know, for extreme clarification purposes on what we're charged to do here.
Commissioner, if you'll indulge me momentarily. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. I do think, and this is only because I'm a local government attorney, I did try to actually parse this out, I actually don't believe that the magisterial districts would serve as a barrier here. And I think that's just, there's a process that's separate from running for election for an elected term versus an appointed term. I don't think that it's actually going to play in as a factor, just based on what I think I understand about, you know, the way that this is going to move forward. But I don't think that code actually specifies that that is an issue. If we do think that it's going to be an issue, I think we should request an opinion from our prosecuting attorney. But I can't actually find that in code, and my technical reading makes me think that it's actually not a factor. The way that I was going to propose that we move forward with this process, understanding it as I do, is that I have had the chance to discuss the opportunity and to vet slash talk about the position with several potential candidates and research them to the best of my ability. I've got a list of proposed candidates, which I plan to tender to Commissioner Eglinger. These are people that I've had the opportunity, like I said, to, one, I shopped for folks that have a demonstrated level of public administrative experience, because I think that, you know, that's something that we should look for in losing two commissioners pretty much at the same time, and then me being new to the position. So I'm looking for somebody with public administrative experience. I've got a list of names. My plan is to provide that list of names to Commissioner Eglinger, probably today after this meeting, and allow him to do his own research into these candidates. An ideal situation, so that we don't violate OGMMA, is that within one week, Commissioner Eglinger could let me know, hey, we actually have an agreement, and he can pick out of the names that I've provided, that we have an agreement on a candidate, we can place that item on an agenda, and then we can actually make an appointment within a week. But I think that also, if out of the list of names, Commissioner Eglinger doesn't find anybody to be satisfactory, we would be able to know within a week as to whether or not we're going to be able to come up with an agreement, and then we could allow the process to play out as spelled out in code. That's my proposal. I do think that getting a commissioner appointed is a top priority. I am forward deployed. I'm a member of the National Guard out of the country right now. I am giving everything that I can to this position, but I think that, you know, in the interest of serving the community, we get somebody in this office and we kind of make sure that we've got the county running on an even keel as soon as we can. So that's my proposal. I'm happy to discuss, you know, what you think about it, Commissioner Eglinger. But I think that if we move forward that way, you and I could understand whether or not we have an agreement within a week. We could place that on the agenda for a special meeting, and we could have a new commissioner as either early as the end of this week or the first part of next week, or we would be able to notify the Executive Committee that they've got to step in and move, and we don't have to wait 30 days.
Okay. Commissioner Mans, thank you for your discussion. And my proposal, again, I didn't put it out there, I just read, wanted to read the law first. My proposal is similar. Again, I have had multiple inquiries, and I have myself put a list together of what I think is very qualified candidates. And I would be willing to submit my list to you as well. And so I think we're definitely on the same page there. You know, and I did want to touch on the need here for us to act swiftly. This is something that could get drug out, and it doesn't sound like either commissioner wants that. And I definitely don't want that. I do have concern, you know, Commissioner Cannon's leaving us after this meeting. And while, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Manson's service to his country, at the same time, and I appreciate the effort with the technology we have today to continually be active as commissioner. However, once Commissioner Cannon leaves today, we have one physical commissioner in the county, which hopefully, you know, and again, I don't know the details of Commissioner Manson's duties, and some of those can't be released, I'm sure, because of what he does. But I, you know, I don't know of all the time what his accessibility is. And with one commissioner present, should that happen, and in this case, there's somewhat of an increased possibility, you know, one commissioner can't do anything. We can't even sign invoices or approve invoices. So I'm adamant about doing this quickly, and I'm glad Commissioner Manson agrees. Sounds like we're on the same page as far as submitting a list of nominees to each other. I'm 100% good with that. And as President, I would like to call for a special meeting, and I'll defer to the clerk and Commissioner Manson, and I guess in myself, on a date. I'd like it to be within one week of today. That would be next Tuesday or before, if we would like to. A special meeting needs officially two days, I believe.
Correct. Monday will be a holiday. President's Day, federal holiday.
Okay. Well, in looking at calendars of...
Commissioner Eglinger, if...
Go ahead.
If I may, Commissioner, I think we can actually postpone scheduling the meeting until we look at a list. Because I think as soon as we are able to say, hey, we're going to have an agreement or we're not, we can, we can, I also think it's appropriate that we take the time to evaluate the candidates as they're presented to us. But I think that if we are, if we come to the determination that we're not going to be able to agree, which is a possibility, I hope that's not the case, but it is a possibility. I don't think that we actually need a meeting. I think we can just notify the Executive Committee that they can go ahead and start without the need for calling a meeting to notify them.
Commissioner Cannon, just like you're, do you feel that would be making a decision out of a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to be blunt, because it's the way that I am, as, you know, ridiculously meticulous we've gotten with even things that aren't the law and our opinions. I don't want any part of this. I don't have any part in it. But I do think if we're going to, you know, talk about things like the agenda and every little law, that there should not be any deliberation outside of the meeting.
Yeah, that's my only concern, that's my only, my only concern, Commissioner Manson, is that...
I intend to have no deliberation. I think that you and I can exchange emails saying, we're going to have an agreement or we're not going to have an agreement, depending on the list, with absolutely no back and forth. And if we don't have an agreement, then we can move past it. And that's absolutely the full extent of the conversation that I think would be allowed by OGMMA. And then if you do have a name, you know, then we can put that name on the agenda, and that would satisfy OGMMA. But unless your intent is to, and I'll entertain this, if your intent is to discuss each of the names, you know, and make the decision in the public meeting, then that's, you know, a thing that we can do. But I think it could be as easy as you can look at the list and say, hey, we're going to have an agreement, or no, we're not.
So what I would propose, Commissioner Manson, is that we go ahead and schedule a meeting. You know, again, if there's a common person on our nominations, that might make it easy. Therefore, the meeting would be scheduled, and we could possibly go ahead and appoint if there's multiple common persons on that list. We could also use that meeting to discuss. And, you know, as you point out, if there's no common ground at all, and neither of us wish to entertain any of the others' nominations, then I would still suggest that I simply follow through with that meeting and just explain to the public that it'll be going on to the Republican Committee.
And in the interest of, I actually hope that we do have the meeting, that we need it, because that'll hopefully mean that we've reached determination and can make an appointment.
Clerk, so let's see, I'm just making sure, could we do that as early as Friday and get that legally posted and everything?
Yes.
Are you, are you okay with Friday morning, Commissioner Manson?
The evening would be best for me, if that's possible. Evening kicks it into a different time of the day for me, and I'm more available.
Okay. Clerk, what's your evening availability there?
Whatever. For a special meeting, you could do it on Thursday as well, 13th.
We posted this afternoon. Yeah, right. Thursday, Commissioner Manson, same thing with the time?
Thursday evening would be fine with me.
6:00 PM Eastern.
Okay, I would agree to that. So as President, I'll call for a special meeting for the continued process of a selection of a new commissioner for Hampshire County on Thursday at 6:00 PM. And I will, I will try to have you, my official list of nominations, Commissioner Manson, within 12 hours.
Yeah, I do think that we should talk about, and Clerk's right, I think that this is kind of an important thing, special meeting. then I, I would still suggest that I simply follow through with that meeting and just explain to the public that it'll be going on to the Republican Committee.
And in the, in the interest of, I actually hope that we do have the meeting, that we need it, because that'll hopefully mean that we've, we've reached a determination and can make an appointment.
Clerk, so, let's see, I'm just making sure, could, could we do that as early as Friday, and, and get that legally posted and everything?
Yes.
Are you, are you okay with, with Friday morning, Commissioner Mans?
The evening would be best for me, that, if that's, if that's possible. Evening kicks it into the, a different time of the day for me, and I'm more available.
Clerk, what's, what's your evening availability there?
Whatever. But for a special meeting, you could do it on Thursday as well, 13th.
We posted this afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Thursday, Commissioner Mans, or same thing with the time?
Thursday, or Thursday evening would be fine with me.
6:00 PM Eastern.
Okay, I, I would agree to that, so, as President, I'll call for a special meeting for the continued process of a selection of a new commissioner for Hampshire County on Thursday at 6:00 PM. And I will, I will try to have you my official list of nominations, Commissioner Mans, within 12 hours.
Yeah, I do think that we should talk about, and Clerk Stride, I think that this is kind of an important thing, special meeting, I believe today's Tuesday, right, so we're talking about two days from now.
Correct.
When can we amend the agenda by, is that the, I think that the last day is today to amend the agenda, is that correct?
Well, I think for a special, you can, I'd have to look at that. I would think you would have today as, as an opportunity to, or, yeah, through tomorrow, before close of business.
Yeah, the law, law states the President has to give two days' notice.
Notice of the meeting, but, or of change of agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think that's today. The, the only significance of that is if we are going to make a determination and actually make an appointment on that day, that name has to be specified in that notice. So, I'm okay with, I think Thursday's just tight for that, just for everybody to do their due diligence and try to research anybody, but we could just look at the list and say, hey, we have a concurrence, or we don't, and then, you know, put the name on the list.
That would be deliberating outside of a meeting, Commissioner. If you make a decision before the agenda's posted, to post a name on the agenda, that would be deliberating and making a decision prior to the agenda.
Well, if they notified the clerk that, that they had common.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really trying to rack my brain to make sure that we do this the right way. I, I think that if we don't speak and actually discuss it, we're not, we're not, we're not deliberating, but...
Well, I would suggest, I would suggest that each of you reviewed your, your submitted lists, notify the clerk of those who are common on there, and we could, we would know, and the clerk would then post the agenda based on that, and there would be no communication between either of you.
Yeah, I, I would agree, the clerk, clerk has a point, and, and I think we should just go ahead, we should schedule the meeting and keep moving forward. If all we can do on Thursday is discuss, then, then so be it, but that way, there won't be any question of, of deliberation outside of the meeting. And again, if, if there's a, if there's a common ground there, then, and we need another special meeting, then I'll call another special meeting. It, it is something we're going to have to, to work through.
I, I like it. Yep, let's do it.
So, Clerk, we'll stay with the President, call him for a special meeting Thursday 6:00 PM, and that will be for, again, the continued process of selecting a replacement commissioner.
Gotcha.
Okay, I will move us on to, I believe our last item, our last main heading item there on the agenda is HCSA funding and requests and report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Thank you for coming in.
All right, so we'll get down to business. So, we, we have an obvious budget issue that we've been working with. My team and I have been working diligently over the last week to come up with a plan to significantly cut the budget, and our payroll budget specifically, to get us within a range of where we'll be pre-budgeted for last year, prior to my appointment. So, I'll go over an overview of what is proposed after having a Budget Committee meeting. So, the proposed plan aims to implement a 24/72 work schedule with a Kelly Day. This reduces operational strain while maintaining adequate emergency service coverages. This structure is designed to enhance workforce efficiency, decrease overtime expenses, and prevent staff reductions. The schedule is technically a short-term furlough, allowing for cost reductions without permanent staff layoffs. So, my main goal going into this was, I did not want to lay off any employees, it would take years for our department to overcome that. With an already high attrition rate, we need to make sure that we are doing things correctly and building out a system that, that is going to be a, a long-term solution, and we want to make sure that we continue to be able to hire quality employees and quality clinicians to do the job. So, the revised schedule will decrease work hours by approximately 30%, significantly reducing payroll expenditures. The gross payroll for, per pay period will be roughly $61,000 per pay period, which is about a 30% reduction. We were running around 80,000 to 86,000 in previous pay periods. So, this is a significant reduction. The, the funding strategy would be roughly $35,000 coming from the general fund to supplement our fee account. We would also supplement about $15,000 per pay from our no-fee account, which is where our transport billing goes. We also have an expectation of about $12,500 per pay period, an additional collection from the fee account. We also have about $45,000, I found out, was deposited for the fee account already in the month of January that was not accounted for previously. So, I have spoken to the Treasury Department, we should, a safe estimate would be to get another 100,000 to 150,000 dollars from that fee account through the end of the fiscal year. We also did calculate in the enhancement fund, however, after speaking with, with the Director of West Virginia OEMS, I'm not confident that that will be received again this year. We will have to wait and see on that, and that, for those funds need to be dealt out properly. That is up to the Commission to talk with West Virginia OEMS and figure out the proper way to disperse those funds, so I don't want to include that in these calculations, but there is a potential that we could have some extra funding there as well. So, overall, this prevents the layoff of up to eight positions. This will include 24-hour staffing in two stations. We are also working with volunteers very, very closely with this, this helps our schedule. I know I spoke when I was appointed to this position that we want a very unified approach with the volunteers, so I have held meetings with all volunteer companies, EMS companies at this time. They are willing to be a little more accountable with their scheduling and let us know when they are going to be staffed and when they are not going to be staffed, which will allow us to have better coverage across the county. Whenever Company 11 and Romney is staffed, we will be placing a unit in Springfield, which is mostly every single day side, which is when the higher call volumes occur. What I do not want to see is not having any coverage in the Romney area at any given time, because 70% of our call volume comes between Romney and Augusta areas, so we need to make sure that we are adequately staffing the Romney area, as well as, as well as the, the other side of the county, the west side of the county as well. So, we just want to make sure we have adequate staffing across the board, and this allows us to do this. Thankfully, we are improving our relationship with the volunteers significantly. We've already made strides in the last week of simply working together. I, I do know we need to do a better job of supporting our volunteer systems, and I think moving forward with the next budget cycle, we will be able to do that. We'll get into those details at another time that is not related to this budget cycle, but I just wanted to put that out there. So, the total ref, we requested funding from the general fund will be $315,000, which is significantly lower than what was previously estimated. Last year, the estimated budget was going to be around 1.65 million for payroll. We, at the middle of January, were at 1.2 million, which was significantly above what it should have been. This will allow us to be at about 1.85 million at the end of the fiscal year of July, which is far less than what it was going to be projected at the, the rate that we were going previously. This also is a attractive schedule to career EMS workers, so this will help us with our attrition rate, it will help us to retain employees with a better work-life balance, as well as morale in the department, and we will be attractive when we do want to go ahead and have 24-hour staffing to all three stations, when we need to hire about four more employees, hopefully in the September timeframe, once we get some fee reimbursement. So, overall, that's, that's everything that I had. There is a detailed proposal that you guys all have. If you want to read through the exact breakdowns of all the dollar figures and the complete structure of the system, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Chief Hammerick. I, I know that was a lot of work. I'm glad that you all involved me in that process and kept me up to date, and I, I serve on your, your subcommittee, so I know what amount of work that was in basically seven days, or, or seven or eight, nine days there, that, that you've been working on it diligently, and I, I think, too, it attests to, of the ability for us to fix, fix a problem there, and a lot of good ideas coming forth, so, you know, I really appreciate you all's dedication to this for the Commission, especially here within the last week to 10 days.
I'm majorly in favor of the restructuring, and I'll echo what the President said. Thank you for a lot of time, I can tell you put a lot of time into this, but the only item that I wanted to mention before I leave, gentlemen, is the salary enhancement funds. We had gone back and forth previously on that, I just hope that the Commission, moving forward, will investigate or reinvestigate. I know Commissioner Eglinger really looked into that, and there's some, some wordage that leaves a lot of room for interpretation, but it's definitely money that we don't want to lose from the state.
I agree.
It is, I do agree with Commissioner Eglinger, you know, the, the textbook definition of a volunteer is, is that they're not paid, and I do know that there are a lot of volunteers that volunteer a lot of time where they don't get paid, but, but nevertheless, the overarching goal is to make sure we don't lose the money, and I really, really hope we can reinvestigate that, and hope you will, Chief, and Deputy Chief, if you will, before, we don't want to do it at the last minute. We need to figure it out and, and make sure we're all on the same, same page.
I agree.
Chief Hammerick, do you mind if I ask you to move your mic just a little bit closer?
Sure.
Talk to you for a second?
Yep.
All right, um, appreciate it, this is fantastic, this is, I think, I'm maybe speaking only for myself, but I don't think so, this is what we were hoping was going to happen when you got on board, so thank you for diving into this, bringing it forward, showing us what you plan to do. Great, great first step. Just, this is the way that I'm going to try to work with you, because I think you can handle it. What do you foresee the issues with this transition being, and then what do you plan to do to mitigate them?
So, speaking with, with the current employees, there is mostly positive feedback. There are a couple people that the 24-hour shifts are going to be difficult with, with some of their scheduling constraints, but I don't believe we're going to have anyone leave the department. I think with the, the new command structure that has been implemented, there is better oversight and accountability for each of the employees, so I think working in a 24-hour system with a command structure in place, we will be able to hold our employees accountable, and, and they all know that they are public servants of the community, and they're expected to, to work that way. So, I think we're going to be able, with this structure and with this plan, to have a, a higher morale, less of an attrition rate, a less of a leave rate, and we will be able to retain employees as well as attract new employees when the time comes to grow a little bit. So, I, I don't really see a whole lot of major issues from the financial side. I think we have a solid plan throughout the rest of the fiscal year to, to handle this staffing plan, and I think that we, we will have adequate coverage across the county. Obviously optimal, we would like to have 24-hour staffing in all stations across the county. However, with the budgetary constraints, we cannot do that at this time, at least until after July 1st. So, unless there's a way to obtain more funding, which I think we're all on the same page that we don't have that option at this time, this is the best option to have with the least amount of kickback.
The thing that I would like to ask of you, as you move forward through this, understanding that this is a transition, what is your thoughts, I mean, would you mind coming to us maybe once a month and just saying, hey, here's how the rollout is actually playing out, just so we can be apprised of, you know, if it does have any, just keep posted on how, how it's actually shaping up?
So, yes, I, I plan to attend...
If you think that that's too much, then, every, go ahead.
Yep, I, I plan to attend every Commission meeting, and if I, in my absence, I will send one of my team to sit in in my place, and we will, we can bi-weekly or monthly meet with the Commission and let you know the, how everything's going, if there's any changes that need to be made, and, and just keep everyone updated on the situation.
Sounds great, and not at all, like, an intent to, like, hold you to the line, it's just, I understand that when you make transitions like this, there, things can pop up, and you might need the opportunity to flex back and forth, and just want to provide you as much support and the ability to track, you know, how everything's playing out, so if that works for you, that, that sounds great.
No, I fully believe that as a public servant to this community, I should be held accountable for all the decisions we make, and we need to be forthcoming with anything that comes about, and make sure that everyone's on the same page of how things are working, and, and needing to make fluid changes if, if changes need to occur, so I think we're all on the same page with that.
Sounds great.
Again, I, I thank you, both of you, for the intense work on this, and I, I'm really looking forward to what we can do the rest of this year, and then with the, the new year starting in July, I think there's a, a lot of good things to, to come out of, maybe the hurdles and, and struggles we've had here in the past year. I think a lot of good can come from that, and we can learn from that, so thank you for your, your time.
Captain Turner, do you have anything? I'd just like to keep my team included, if they have anything else to add, I just want to make sure they have the opportunity.
I think we covered everything pretty well.
Okay. I believe that is it for our presentation. If you guys have any other feedback?
So, the, the ask here, gentlemen, is, could you repeat the ask for us, Chief?
So, from the general fund, we would be requesting $315,000 to finish out payroll for the fiscal year through July 1st. And I would like to add, these are conservative numbers, we did build buffers into our system to make sure that we don't have to come back and ask for more, so I think these are pretty comfortable numbers to work with, to finish out the fiscal year.
Okay, do I hear a motion to...
From, from the, from, from the clerk, just real quick, clerk, would it be more convenient for your staff to do the transfer all at once, or to authorize the amount, and then just make the allocations as, as needed?
I think the, to authorize the amount and let them draw from it as needed, as they do payrolls, would be the most flexible and, and practical.
Okay, do I hear a motion to the effect to, to approve the $315,000 request from the general fund?
I would move to allocate $315,000 from the general fund to cover HCSA payroll as discussed during this meeting, to be drawn upon as needed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the requests the Chief Hammerick has presented, Deputy Turner have, have presented to us, and we thank you for the detail on that. All those in favor of the motion, and the second, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Aye.
Motion passed. I believe we're down to invoices. Mr. Clerk?
Please pay us some bills.
Please pay us some bills.
Mr. President, I'd move that the Commission approved the invoices as presented.
I'll second that motion. Okay, Commissioner Mans, second to motion. All those in favor of the invoices presented since our last meeting be approved, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Anything else, Clerk?
Mr. President, I would mention that in regard to tomorrow's Board of Equalization Review meeting, at this time, we have no people scheduled to contest tax questions, but the meeting is scheduled for 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. Should pending, should weather impact that time, the meeting will be held at the time the courthouse opens, which would typically be 10:00 AM, if it's a two-hour delay. So Commissioner Mans will send you a text or let you know what's going on weather-wise here, but as it stands, we have no one scheduled, so.
Okay, and Commissioner Mans, just being that you're brand-new, you understand that I still have to bring the meeting out of recess tomorrow, and that I would, with Commissioner Cannon being gone, I would need your attendance to simply bring us out of recess and go back into recess is basically what it would be.
Okay. So that's, yep, let's, yeah, I think we can make it work.
Okay, anything else before the Commission at this time?
I have nothing else, sir.
I would move that we adjourn, Mr. President.
I'll second that.
Second.
It's been, there's a little delay there with, but anyway, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye.